Okay, welcome to this afternoon's work session, special call meeting as well. First item of business would be to inquire as to if any commissioner would like to take a preliminary item for discussion for the next BLC meeting.
Yes.
Yes ma'am.
Item twenty-four, which is twenty-two, twenty-two, two-twelve, and it's regarding the funding. One of the first ones on there is organization in which I think has come before this body for questions several times, and they're first on that list with forty-five thousand, and I think we need to massage that list a little bit more, so I would definitely like to have it taken from the consent agenda.
All right, is anybody here to speak to item twenty-four? Ms. Seal, reference to the five oh one C organizations.
I think the email was sent by CFO Merritt.
Yeah, she sent it. So what particular you want to speak on, Commissioner Franklin?
As I previously stated, one of the first organizations on there is an organization which has come before question of this board, and they are one of the top organizations to receive what seems to be a large, well, a good amount of the money.
So your ask or request is?
If they're being investigated, why are they on this list?
So Commissioner, I'm trying to figure out the number that you're referencing.
It's African Children's Fund, is item twenty, I read the actual item that you have of a resolution, is Resolution twenty-two, dash, two-twelve.
It's the Articles of Agreement with certain community charitable organizations.
So this is for next Tuesday night, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, we're just discussing.
Okay, so what's your question?
So specifically?
So she's asking, so the...
So when the organizations submit information over to the collaborative, John Brinson and his organization, they go through a vetting process, and I think the Commissioner's question specifically is the fact that we have an organization that's being investigated, why would they be on that list?
We still have not gotten information on how monies were spent previously on other monies that were awarded. I've gotten some overages, but I've not gotten detailed information that's been requested, and I think I'd asked, no, I was gonna ask for it to be on an agenda as well. So it was interesting that they were the first on that list.
So we do have an update on the agenda for next Tuesday night.
Okay.
That you requested regarding the spreadsheet that Attorney Reed sent you.
Okay.
So I was planning on giving you an update on that next Tuesday night. As far as the block grant, anybody that scored a ninety or above qualified and came through. So not knowing these organizations myself, I sat down with John Brinson, and basically we went through and kind of allocated it similar to where it was last year. So that's why I've presented it to the board and can make any changes at all, these are just recommendations. So I've done the recommendations based on historical allocation, so anything that we want to change is definitely, we can do that.
Okay, well, we can look at that a little bit further, because there are a couple more on there, so I could, I can wait until after you do that presentation. I think, in fact, one of the organizations, Alpha, I think they're doing something, I think Mr. Brinson is part of that one too.
So I did ask him to be here next Tuesday night.
Okay.
Because we, I thought it was coming back for a vote, so it can, we can do that, or if you have some recommendations that you would like me to change, I can do an alternate, and we can bring both, and you can decide which one you want to vote on, so we could go ahead and get the money out, that's up to the board.
Okay, and also, but with it, I hope that the board would consider the need, and I know we will, the needs of the community. We're always focusing on those with mental health, those that are having issues with being able to ensure that their families are taken care of, and so I know that there's a process that they use with the collaborative, but then that recommendation's just provided to us. So it's just been something we've been talking about for a while, and I just think we gotta keep massaging it to get it to the point to where it's strategic, those funds are strategically being used to be able to combat the issues within our community, because the community block grant is specifically for that.
And we do, we have nine hundred thousand dollars, so I did meet with him, and he did help me with firming up those allocations, but like I said, they are just a recommendation.
Okay.
So it's definitely the will of the board on how you want to allocate those out.
Thank you.
And let me ask this, they're ranked by, they are scored, so they get a certain number of points per set, a set criteria, and AFC scored a hundred?
I don't have it, I didn't have it actually with me today.
That's what the score was there, so I just want to also just be mindful of the fact that everybody's judging according to the same criteria.
They are, and anybody that scored ninety or above came through on the spreadsheet.
Gotcha.
So there are some newer agencies on there that we did not give that much funding to, because they're newer, and we didn't, there was no historical value there. Like I said, we did kind of base it off what happened over the last few years, and we can definitely change that moving forward.
I look forward to your presentation.
Okay.
Commissioner Hamburg?
Uh, yes, I don't know if Commissioner Franklin touched on this, but at one point we were going to have those groups come before us to tell us what they do and all. I know they put it on paper, because for years we had this organization that we were giving money, and the organization was nonexistent.
Yes ma'am.
They, you know, stopped operating, so I think that would be a good idea. I mean, I can see us go ahead and vote now, because it is late and all, but pull out the ones, because I had a couple too that I have questions about, including ACF.
I also was gonna add, Commissioner Hamburg and I were talking in the hallway prior to the meeting, and the additional money of the ERA funding that's in space, the fact that we've used the traditional third-party administrator to get the funding out, whether that was ACH, or Harsher Nish, or G-Men, we're looking to try to see about having that funding reallocated, to see if we can use some of the nonprofits to get that money in the community as well. So we will be providing a recommendation to the board, I know the CFO referenced the nine hundred thousand, but we may have some opportunities for additional funding, Commissioner Franklin, as you just outlined, how do we get this money directly to the citizens is important, so we're looking to provide some recommendations to the board about how we get that additional funding out, and preferably and hopefully utilizing our institutions through the community, through the Commissioner's Block Grant Fund as a means for which they can give that money directly to the community.
Keeping in mind that we do have a deadline.
We have a deadline of December twenty-ninth of this year, yes ma'am.
And we got people waiting on it too. I know I've got calls, as latest today, Kayla was telling me she got even additional calls, like over, I know it was over ten calls I've sent, I tried to send the emails to the whole board, so once again, there's a disconnect of what we're getting back from community members and what's being done versus what somebody is putting on paper, and it's our job just to make sure that that is shored up.
Yes ma'am.
Any other items you'd like to discuss? All right, let's move into our agenda for our work session. First item up is Strayer University Partnership through Human Resources, Ms. Pam Adams.
Good evening Chairman, Vice Chair Commissioners, and good evening to our Clayton County citizens. Employee relation is the building, building of goodwill among your employees, and Human Resources has a keen focus on this function. Back in February, we presented the results of our twenty-twenty-one stay interview. We informed the board that we would be implementing different initiatives based on the results of our survey. Recruitment and retention without walking the talk is not effective. The goal is to provide the best possible work environment to our employees and future employees. Human Resources Officer Ryan Shaw will share a partnership opportunity with Strayer University. The partnership requires an agreement, and I've sent the agreement to legal to be reviewed. Staff attorney Keith Over had very little feedback regarding any edits, and advised that she is excited about the partnership. Of note, we can discontinue the partnership within ninety days of notice without cause or question, and at that time, if we have employees who are enrolled in the program, they would not lose any of their discounts. There is no cost to the county, the employee will receive discounts based on the partnership. And with that being said, Mr. Ryan Shaw, please.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone, I'm Ryan Shaw, your Human Resources Officer. On July of this year, I was presented by Mr. Travis Norris of the Strayer University an opportunity that could assist this agency and the members, our employees of this agency in regards to higher education. Okay. In discussing this, today we will be discussing the background information on Strayer University, the cost of tuition, tuition discounts that are available to our employees, as well as how this benefits Clayton County Board Commissioners and its employees. Strayer University is an accredited institute, and they offer online as well as onsite classes in a variety of different areas. Anyone who goes to Strayer University can achieve Associate's Degree, Bachelor's, Masters, as well as various certifications as well. The academic programs include Business Administration, Criminal Justice, Information Technology, and more. Now here in the metropolitan area of Atlanta, they have five campuses, but the one nearest here would be the location at Morrow. Right now, the support staff are currently onsite, but based on conversations with Mr. Travis Norris, they are phasing back onsite classes for the students. This thing does not light me today. Here you see the cost of tuition for the certificate program, the bachelor's degree program, and the graduate degree program. I wanted to give you this so that you have a reference in regards to what the discounts are going to be off of. Strayer University is offering us four components in regards to discounts. The first component would be the Civic and Community Alliance Scholarship. With this, our employees will be able to obtain a fifty percent discount off their tuition for Associate's, Bachelor's, and Master's Degrees. This would not go for a certificate program, however, in the event an employee pursues a program, and there are classes that they take that are also part of the certificate program, they can get them at the same time. The availability of this opportunity has been extended up to the year twenty-twenty-three. Every single government employee here at Clayton County will have access to this, and also by engaging in this partnership, the family members of Clayton County employees will also have access to a ten percent discount on their higher education program. The Fellows for Justice Program is another component of the discounts that Strayer is offering us. This is awarded to those in the community or those employees who make exemplary strides in their community to reverse social justice, people such as those in law enforcement and legal positions, however, in speaking with Strayer, it is not specific for any one career path. Strayer University offers up to fifty scholarships per year, and our employees could have access to that, and those scholarships are full tuition scholarships for a bachelor's degree program. Now, if one of our people gets this scholarship, they'll be invited to networking events where they are able to meet new people, share ideas, increase the visibility of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners as well, and also they'll receive special recognition invitations to exclusive Strayer University events. Another component of this partnership would be access to the Sophia Learning Platform, which is, which is a learning management system. Basically, employees would be able to get to classes such as business, communications, computer science, social science, and various other levels. Now, a good part about this is that these classes, you receive credit, you can transfer these credits to other universities, and they are one hundred percent free, so that's an extra savings. As a matter of fact, it's a savings of up to fourteen thousand eight hundred dollars on a Strayer University Bachelor's Degree. Free of cost, not only that, but employees would be able to learn at their own pace. Now in the event that we pursue this partnership, we get this partnership, the initial fifty percent discount will only be applicable for those who enroll before the end of twenty-twenty-three. But in the event that we get this partnership, and our employees want to enroll after that, they'll still be able to pursue the other three components of the discount program. Not only that, Strayer University will create for us a landing page, sort of like a dashboard, which would be somewhat of a pathway of success to our employees as they pursue the higher education. This will direct employees to items for which they are eligible, such as financial aid and other resources, and it provides employees with the next steps for their programs. And the only thing employees would need to do is to provide proof of employment, such as with a pay stub or with an email address. And how does this benefit us? It benefits us in regards to recruitment and retention, this is a, an attractive component that could maintain, retain our employees as well as attract new employees. At Human Resources, we speak a lot about recruitment and retention, as a matter of fact, we have a job fair coming up, a career fair, excuse me, coming up tomorrow at the South Clayton Recreation Center, where all of our departments will be broadcasting their jobs, hoping to fill them. The last time we had a job fair such as this, we were very successful in fulfilling a good amount of jobs. This benefit will also benefit us in regards to reducing turnover costs and increasing visibility of the organization. It's important for Clayton County to have a well-developed staff by pursuing higher education at a discounted cost, this would increase the efficiency of our workplace and creates more motivated and valued employees. That being stated, if you have any questions, I will fill them at this point.
Any questions for Ms. Shaw? Yes ma'am.
I have a question. So you said one hundred percent of tuition will be paid by the Fellow for Justice Scholarship Program?
That is correct.
All right, and those who don't get the scholarship, I might have missed it, how will they pay for tuition?
They will have access to the initial one, the civic scholarship, where they get fifty percent off.
Fifty percent.
And then if they do not enroll before twenty-twenty-three, they will still get access to the twenty percent, oh, excuse me, the ten percent discount, as well as access to the graduate fund.
Okay, and also, you know, our employees can get public service loan forgiveness because they work for a governmental agency, so those who don't get the full amount paid, they can utilize the public service loan forgiveness, so we, let's just add that as an option as well, so if they don't get the hundred percent, or get the fifty percent, or get the ten percent, they'll have that option to pay where their loans will be forgiven within ten years.
I'll study, yes ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Is Strayer still a for-profit private institution?
Well, I could tell you that they are an accredited institution in regards to for-profit, that I'm not one hundred percent certain of, but I will do some research on that and follow up.
Okay, because I believe they are, and so this is paid for by our employees, though? The ones that do not get a hundred percent tuition or only get the fifty percent tuition?
That is correct, unless they have other scholarships available or other scholarships that they pursue, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. Yes. Any others? Thank you for your presentation, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, twenty-twenty-three benefits mix, also Human Resources, Ms. Adams.
And Commissioner Davis, I do want to reiterate that there is no cost to the county, and the cost of the tuition would be the responsibility of the employee, just the discounts that they would be available, and also to let you all know that Ryan, there are several other initiatives that he will be presenting to the board, our volunteerism policy, the discount policy that we're trying to program, we're trying to get started with the local businesses and our Clayton County employees, as well as we're revisiting our school leave policy as well, so you'll be seeing a little bit more of Ryan as we try to get some of these initiatives rolled out. All right. I want to thank the board for your approval of the twenty-twenty-three benefits for the employees, and I want to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to revisit the proposed twenty-twenty-three medical benefit for the retirees. My presentation is gonna be very short, simple, and to the, and to the point. Okay. Let's see if this is the one, okay. I want to first start out by talking about our twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four strategy for retiree medical. We will continue to look for cost savings without compromising quality. Although we spoke directly with two retirees about our previously proposed change, the two employee, the two retirees that we spoke with, one has extensive experience in benefits administration, and the other one, Mr. Dennis Baker, he really keep his finger on the pulse of the retirees, and oftentimes serves as spokesperson for the retirees, but we realized that perhaps we did not do enough, so the early part of the year, we will begin hosting town hall meetings and surveys to include our retirees. The goal is to always look for cost savings, which is important to sustainability, without compromising quality, so we will start that the early part of the year. Also, early twenty-twenty-three, I want our consultants, I'm going to task them with providing a presentation to the board on the renewal process, specifically focusing on the timelines. Twenty-twenty-three benefits, medical retirees, Kaiser Senior Advantage, what you see here on the slide, you'll see at the bottom, twenty-twenty-two Kaiser cost to the county was seven hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. Twenty-twenty-three, the proposed county cost is five hundred and ninety-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars. That is a decreased cost of a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars. Same with Aetna, if you'll look on the slides, you'll see that twenty-twenty-two cost for the county were one million, forty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars. This year, Aetna has proposed an eight hundred forty-nine thousand, four hundred and eight dollar cost to the county, which is a decrease of a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. So we are asking that the board consider twenty-twenty-three Kaiser Senior Advantage, twenty-twenty-three Aetna Medicare Advantage at a cost of one point four million dollars. As you can see, in twenty-twenty-two, the cost was one point eight million, so that is a total decrease of three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars, but I do want the board to know that we are going to continue to look for those cost savings without sacrificing quality, and that's all I have.
All right, any questions for Ms. Adams?
Commissioner? So this is different from what was presented at the commission meeting on...
Yes ma'am, it is. We, one of the things that you said, Commissioner, that really struck home for me is that we do need to hear from the retirees. That's why we are planning early twenty-twenty-three to start those town hall meetings and surveys early so that we can get the retirees' input. HR, we are looking for ways that we can better communicate with our retirees, because it's important. So I heard, I heard that concern from you loud and clear, and I thought about it, we do, I did talk to two of the retirees, but perhaps that was not enough. So before we, we move any further, we want to do like we did with the actives, and to, is to engage more surveys, get more input from the retirees, like we try to do with the active employees. So yes ma'am, it is different.
Okay, so in our special call meeting later, when we have the vote, is this what we're voting on?
Yes ma'am. Yes ma'am.
I do have one, Commissioner Davis, kind of simplistic question, which is, I see a decrease.
Mm-hmm.
Is this de, this decrease for this coming year, is this from where we are not servicing as many products, or is the price just dropping?
The spirit of negot, the spirit of negotiation, yeah, the spirit of negotiation. One of the things that I can say about Aetna, we did have a quote from Anthem, which would have saved an additional around sixty-eight thousand or so. Anthem did step up to the plate, and under the negotiated quote, they really, they really stepped up their game, which to me, as the HR Director, shows that they appreciate our business, they appreciate the retirees, and what we're trying to do. But I know that there's always concern with moving from one carrier to the other, and that's, that's totally understood, because you've got to think about disruption, you know, we get comfortable with our doctors, we don't want to move, we get comfortable with our pharmacies, we don't want to change, but we had ran a lot of different analysis, and the impact would have been very minor, but what stuck with me were, Madam Vice Chair, I would definitely want to get more information from the retirees, so that when I bring you all something back, it would, we, their voices will be heard, just like we're doing with the actives. As a matter of fact, it is because, and I hope that our, that the employees hear me say this, we were going to bring a special surcharge to the board, an increase, because we have not increased our surcharge in a very, very long time. But because of the feedback we got from our employees, seven hundred and fifty strong stepped up to the plate, and the majority of them did not want that to happen, so I, as the HR Director and my team, we made the decision that they're not, there's not readiness for that right now. So we, that's the type of dialogue we need to be having with the retirees as well, is getting all of that, all of that feedback.
Now, the dialogue you're going to have in January, though, is for twenty-twenty-four, is it?
Yes sir.
So not for twenty-twenty-three?
Not for twenty-twenty-three, we want to start early, make sure we start early, so we'll do that early January, start with early twenty-twenty-three, so that when we come before you all with the twenty-twenty-four, God's will, we come before you with the twenty-twenty-four, that way I can say, well, look, we talked to the retirees, and here's what they said, just like we've had that dialogue with the employees. And we will be posting the survey results on the buzz, because we got some very good information from our employees in regards to their satisfaction rate, in regards to their concerns, in regards to what keeps them from fully utilizing their benefits, so that will be posted on, on the buzz, so that the employees can know that their feedback wasn't in vain.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Franklin?
First, thank you for giving us some numbers, but where's our broker, so that they could give us, because I specifically asked for, in the last meeting, that the broker that you all present to us, options, and I do concur with Vice Chair, it's a little confusing when, as a department, number one, you present one thing to the board, and you actually put it on the agenda for us to vote on it, and we had to pull it off, so all of a sudden, within a week's time, we've done a complete one-eighty, and I work in this industry, and I know that things happen quickly, but where's our broker so that they can provide this information, more information to us, because I have more questions for them, and then the second question is, I want to make sure I heard you right, because even though I wasn't here and present at the meeting, but I had two screens going to make sure I didn't miss anything, and I think at the last meeting, when the question was asked, you said that you did survey the retirees, and now today you're telling us the only persons you surveyed were somebody dealing with benefits, and one person that you said has a pulse on all the retirees? That's a little concerning that the information previously was even presented to this board, and we were made to believe, because that question was asked, and you stated specifically, we have surveyed them, and now today, this whole department, your division, was making a decision, brought to this board off of only two people, and I know you said the first person was who now?
Well, let me say this first, Commissioner, I try to be very careful what I put on the record, so the record will clearly state what I said. One of the employee, one of the retirees that we reviewed, that we talked with, was Catherine Dotson, who is recognized in the industry as having a lot of experience. The second one was Dennis Baker, so go check the record, and if I stand to be corrected, then I would have to stand on that, but I did make it clear, we did, we did a massive survey of our active people, and I spoke directly with two retirees that I felt could give me good feedback. Now, the broker is here, the broker does not control the internal processes that we have laid out, but the broker is here, and the broker can come up and provide you any more information that you need. Jack?
I'm glad you brought that up.
Excuse me, I don't think she, Commissioner Franklin has some questions for her.
What did you say now?
She said for the sake of time.
For the sake of time, since we already have this presented, let's go on.
I, I think we need to get this right, and I think that what comes before us needs to be accurate, and I just want to make sure it's accurate. For the sake of time is really good, but let's all of us be mindful that over the past few months...
For sake of time is really good, but let's all of us be mindful that over the past few months, we've had directors present things to us that have come back to be erroneous, not once, not twice, on probably three occasions, so. And I just want to know for certain, considering what you all are presenting tonight, are these numbers, numbers that we can see and realize the savings or is this just a projection?
No, those numbers are solid based on the reduction that we negotiated with Kaiser and based on the reduction that we negotiated with Aetna as well. And so it might be off a dollar, 357, 873, maybe mine's is four, 874, but it's solid.
Okay, and what was your definitive nature in changing it from what was presented to this board last week for us to vote on versus what's before us now?
This is Director Ambles' presentation.
I'm clear.
And so we heard Vice Commissioner Hambrik loud and clear about the timeline and you as well, and your knowledge and expertise in the industry is appreciated. I will also say that in our industry, and I'm sure you're aware of this, that the stop-loss marketplace has hardened. And the best example that I can give you is that your current self-funded medical carrier, Aetna or Anthem, refuses to firm up their stop-loss proposals until they have data through September the 30th. And so my thoughts were, and to speak to the timeline in the first quarter of next year for 1-1-2024, is to uncouple the renewals moving forward and do everything else except for the self-funded medical plan and the stop-loss insurance, which is the challenging part of this, and get all of the other renewals out of the way. And that could be as early as Labor Day or even before that. And then as we move around into the calendar year into the fall, we would negotiate again with the stop-loss carriers to firm up the quotes. We weren't, we did not have the opportunity to present the commercial renewal. There's a lot of really good information in that in terms of a half a million dollars of additional pharmacy rebates to the county. We avoided a $450,000 increase in stop-loss insurance by moving it away from Anthem to Voya. And also, we reduced about, negotiated a half a million dollar reduction in the Kaiser fully insured commercial plan as well. So we welcome and look forward to the opportunity to meet with you and share the good news, there's a lot of it. And I think by uncoupling the challenging aspect, which is the stop-loss insurance with the self-funded medical plan, it frees up everything to do it earlier and to address your concern that you eloquently conveyed last week about being early.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And I appreciate that detailed information because it is there very helpful. The other thing we can talk about a little bit later that I'm finding, as you see a trend, is for those that are on any type of specialty medications, we noticed that they're getting them at a discounted rate through another carrier. So I do want us to continue to look at that, if you can make a note of that. And I know that it takes a minute for people to get accustomed to it, but it definitely does work out in the long run. In some of the areas that I've seen in other governments, they've saved an additional million to $2 million because as you know, that's the part that really would drive up that prescription drug cost as well. But I have to honestly say thank you for the work that you all are doing and I'm glad for this information to come before us today.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir, for answering those questions. And Ms. Ambles, you had anything to follow up with?
I do, I'm sorry, I have one more. Please send over, and it's actually in tandem with Commissioner, oh gosh, Davis's question. Really, what I need to see as well, because I know we've got a special call meeting, if you could really send over to me the actual plan doc. That way I can review it to make sure that some of the areas, I want to make sure that are in that plan. Because we're seeing numbers, but behind these numbers are the services that come along with it. So I wanted to take a quick look at that, if you don't mind.
And that plan doc is from?
I guess if you have it from Aetna or Kaiser, just to see what you've used, what they use in there to evaluate. Thank you so much. You can just email it to me, I'll look at it real quick.
Ms. Ambles?
Thank you so much for all that you all do for us, we really appreciate you. So in summary, what we are asking for the board's consideration is to approve the 2023 retiree medical with Kaiser and Aetna at a cost of $1.4 million. To be more specific, $1,443,805. And as we've already stated, this is a decrease of the 2, 357.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate your presentation.
Appreciate you too, Chairman, thank you.
Next up, CID update, Nickelworks.
As Ms. McGee made sure that I gave her a formal introduction before she comes to the microphone. Board, as you know, over the, the last year, year and a half, we've actually procured the services of Nickelworks to help us with doing a feasibility study around the 675 and the 138 corridor to figure out build-out in that said space. So Ms. McGee will provide an update on where we are within that process and then, of course, make some recommendations to the board on what we deem as the next steps. So, Ms. McGee.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to come and give you this update. So trying to be brief, have a few slides here, just want to set a little bit of background regarding CID's in general. There are 31 in the metro Atlanta area. And for the one, the first CID in Clayton County, it is a joint CID with the Airport West, which is located in Fulton County. So we're on our map, it shows 29, it's actually 31. Also, there's just some other bullet points here that says it's a quasi-government entity. It's a very powerful public-private partnership in the state of Georgia. It's comprised of property owners as board members. And our eligibility for CID's, the actual parcels, are based on land use codes to determine eligibility and not zonings.
Excuse me? You want, just for everybody's information, what a CID is, what it stands for?
A Community Improvement District, thank you, Commissioner Hambrik. So as the COO stated, it is for Highway 138, that corridor. I'll go to the next slide. And yes, I appreciate you stopping me. We definitely try to make sure that we not just use acronyms. So we'll be talking about Community Improvement District, CID is the short version of it. As you can see, this is sensitive, okay. As you can see here, this covers three jurisdictions, Clayton County, Henry County, and the city of Stockbridge. The study that we did was an individual just for Clayton County. However, because of the jurisdictional lines along 138, Henry County was running a concurrent feasibility study as well as the city of Stockbridge. So in an effort to help the property owners, as we are conversing with them and doing outreach, we have separate maps, but we had a unified map that had all three jurisdictions, which is shown here. And so where you see the color green, those are CID eligible parcels. Where you see the blue, those are either exempt or what we call ineligible parcels. And so on the next slide, that shows just the Clayton County parcels. And so that is what I'm here to talk about today, specifically the information that pertains to Clayton County. So as was stated earlier, the scope of our study was to determine the likelihood of actually having a CID along Highway 138. So in all of our discussions, we talked about, that's what we call it, the Highway 138 CID for all jurisdictions. The number of parcels is shown here as 82. It's actually fluctuating because there, we always get all of our data from the tax assessor's office or the tax commissioner's office. And there were some, I wouldn't say discrepancies in the parcels, but what their eligibility was, if they were actually exempt or not. So we started with 88 and we had some parcels that showed negative values, which was six, and that's how we got down to 82. Everything that we did was from the 2021 tax digest because the 2022 tax digest has just recently been approved. And so at full participation for Clayton County parcels, you can see that it is almost $60 million for the assessed value. For all three jurisdictions, it would be $109 million. And so we don't know what the CID revenue would be that is determined after the CID is created or formed and after a board is elected. But when we're talking to property owners, we have calculated what the values are at three mills, four mills, and five mills, so they can have an idea of what they may potentially be investing or paying. And so you can see here, and I'm just going to use the five mills, that the potential revenue for the Clayton County CID would be close to $297,000. For all of the jurisdictions, it is $547,000. Once again, this is 2021 tax digest. The values in most cases for the CID's have gone up, just in general, anyway. And so it would probably be higher. So that slide basically shows different steps, are the steps that we use. So our job was to do the research because when we get the tax information, it basically just has the parcel info and the entity name. So we have to do the research to get the actual property owner name or delegate and their contact information. So we've done that. And then we also had to do a high level of engagement for those property owners. And that was phone calls, there was emails, there were visits, there were meetings that were had. And then there was also surveys that were done. So those were the things that we did to actually determine the feasibility of a CID. This is a slide that is just to give you a general idea of what is along the 138, Highway 138 corridor, specifically in Clayton County. And so you can see the largest amount of the parcels are retail, followed by actually vacant land and then hospitality, the hotels. And so one of the ways, and in the reporting that we did on a monthly basis, we rank the communication and we rank how we are proceeding with the property owners. So this ranking is typically used when we do a formation. It is slightly modified in, in the feasibility study. So when, there is no communication because we did a mailing. So that meant that if nothing came back or if it did come back, we pretty much reached everyone. One way communication is we're calling or talking to them or sent something out, but we haven't reached them. Two ways, we're actually having dialogue. And a ranking three is the fact that we have actually made contact with the person that can make a decision about the property. The fourth, or ranking four, is actually a decision is made, whether it's a yes decision or a no decision. The one thing that's a little different here, which is, needs to be changed, but it wasn't necessarily a verbal consent to join. It was, I'm very interested in being, in understanding more about a CID and how it could benefit me. This is what is normally used when it is a formation. So you have 21 people that were extremely interested. It was shown by the meetings, we had great attendance with the people at the meetings that came and really just the engagement. We will say a lot of people called back, you know, if we left messages. They were very interested when we went out in the community. You have 14 people that said, no, don't call us anymore, we do not want to be a part of that. And we actually received consent forms. And those consent forms, just to note, even if you don't move forward with the CID, we hold them and they are still good. And so that is kind of where we are. And this actually shows the rankings illustrated as to where the areas are where we got the most interest. So you can see along Mount Zion, that is where the most people are interested as well as the fact that the green on here represents those that actually gave consent forms. So for the findings and conclusions, when it came down to us asking them to make a final decision, hey, are you interested or not, we've done a lot of communication, we got moderate interest. Some people on the survey, it was really asking them to commit one way or the other. And so a lot of them were hesitant about committing. You can see here that the, the primary reasons are listed. They did not want to take on additional expenses because of the pandemic. Some people were very adamant about paying additional property taxes. There's the hotel motel tax, they're paying that, they don't necessarily want to pay the CID tax, if you want to call it that. And then there were several properties that were under contract to be sold or they told us that they were going to be selling them in the future. A key thing that came out, and to be honest, I'm not absolutely positive, I have our project manager here, Tasha, homelessness rose to the top of a concern. And as a person that is on that corridor, I don't necessarily see it, but it's happening behind their properties. And so they are very adamant about how can we address that. And talking to not only Clayton County, but also to the other jurisdictions, I know that there are initiatives underway to, you know, at least thinking about what can be done. And so we've shared that with those owners. But that is something that actually came out of that very first meeting that I think was surprising to a lot of us who were not necessarily a property owner. And then the last thing, as far as no major project or initiative identified, they did not, we talked about beautification and streetscapes, letter control, that type of thing. They were okay with that, but they kept going back to, we need to address the homelessness issue. The main thing to note, and I think you all pretty much know this, a CID cannot address homelessness, unfortunately. A CID can assist with that, but typically the homelessness that is occurring is on individual properties. And so we've seen this in other CID's and we've been, you know, told that the homeless, the businesses, the property owners need to actually call 911 so it can be documented and to get them moved. But that is something, I think, just as a whole, we need to address and we'll talk about that in the recommendations. Something that was different in the Clayton County scope was to look at or to have a susceptibility to change analysis. And so that is to identify future development opportunities. And so we're looking at current ownership of properties. We looked at vacancy rates, parcel sizes, ease of like consolidating parcels and land uses and different things to see what would be the impetus of redevelopment. We know here, or you can see here, excuse me, that the areas in green are areas that are susceptible to change. Interesting to note as well is that there are parcels that would be along I-75 that are actually exempt, but they're still, you know, vacant. So there is opportunity to do some different things along Mount Zion. So there is opportunity to do some different things along Mount Zion and also again on the other side of the interstate, a little bit less in that area. But that was something that we did look at. And we've actually talked to some of those, you know, property owners that own those vacant parcels. And then lastly, our recommendations. So though it seems that the property owners may not be as eager as we probably would have hoped they would have been, I'm very optimistic because of their engagement. Obviously, we're all going through a pandemic and we're really emerging from that now. What we have seen, not just here, but in other CID's that we work with and other just communities in general, the retail area is suffering the most. If you go to restaurants and different things, they're short-staffed, so on and so forth. So it definitely is understandable that they're not ready to pay additional taxes and make that additional investment at this particular time. So our recommendation is that we keep the momentum going and that we don't lose contact with them. I, because they are engaged and they came out to the meetings. And so it states there, we continue educating those that may not have been as familiar. I will tell you that we are working on, we had a feasibility study in Forsyth County. And while talking to them in Forsyth County, they own the property in Clayton County, you know, so it's like a hotel. So there's a small group of owners that own land, you know, all over the metro area. And so the difference there is, you know, in that particular area in Forsyth County, they're still thriving, if I can, you know, say it that way. Whereas here, in the south side, they were struggling. And so they make a business decision whether or not they want to join at that time. But understanding the CID's and being interested, they were. We have on here to have jurisdictions to address the owner concerns and especially as it relates to homelessness. And then there are different projects along Highway one thirty-eight, but to determine what is that banner project that we want for the property owners that they can buy into. And we typically, we get that from them, for them to say, yes, you know, either they can tell us what they're interested in, or you all can present some from your capital improvement project that, program, excuse me, that they can buy into. And then to revisit the property owner, excuse me, to revisit the CID within a year or two after things have, as I say, calmed down and things have gotten back to, I'm not going to say if they're going to get back to normal, but they're going to get back to a place where they may be able to, want to be able to make that additional investment. And so that is pretty much it. Have any questions?
Yeah, so let me ask, and I pretty much know, I probably know the answer to this question, but I'm going to ask anyway.
Okay.
And that is those businesses that you spoke to that were hesitant or no, did you talk to them a reference to the benefits of the CID and what the money would be used for when collected such as beautification efforts, as well as even possibly addressing the homeless issue through the security that's formed to patrol those areas for the members?
We did, we did. I mean, and I say this all the time, it's an education. You know, we're doing outreach, but we're primarily educating them. They're just hesitant. So Tasha and her team probably spoke to them, not probably, she did the majority of speaking to them. However, they were just like, just not ready to commit. And I think it's a timing issue and I think it's an uncertainty issue. We don't know their financial situation, so we try to be extremely sensitive when we're talking to them. And so we're, you know, there's a web, you know, they have information, they can refer to the website. We just want to keep all of that going. I'm still optimistic, if I can be honest with you, because truthfully, there was a lot of engagement. They were eager to, they called back. I mean, that's actually like not always, you know, we don't always get them calling back, but they called back, they answered the phone, they came to the meetings. So that tells me that there is a good potential. You all are small, you know, I say small, you're the Stockbridge has more, you all are second, Henry County has third as far as the number of parcels. I wouldn't say would be difficult to do this, you know, separately, but if you were to focus on your parcels, you could have a CID with that amount of money. I think it was almost three hundred thousand. If you recall, that's about how much it was in, with the first CID in Phoenix Boulevard area.
Yeah, but that area is so choppy, it makes sense to have the whole.
No, it does. I totally agree. That's why, yes, I agree. Because people don't know when they're going from one jurisdiction to the other.
Exactly. Nor do they care. They want to see businesses thrive and beautification and so forth. Commissioner Franklin?
Yes, I want to go back because I was sitting here and I did, was looking through. We're talking about Highway one thirty-eight as it goes into Stockbridge, as you showed us, right?
Yes.
Years ago, the county actually, if I recall correctly, that's the only stretch of county road that actually has levels of investment of beautification that the county spent. And I remember before I got on this board, it was a great debate. But I know that was something actually that Commissioner Edmison did. Now, the first set of trees and bushes they put down were a little haphazard. But then afterwards, I think the county threw out another couple hundred thousand in a budget to get it looking nice like it looks now. And I have to say, it does look nice with the middle and the center of the road. They finally got the, got it together. But I do agree that it's, number one, it's too choppy in order for the county to enter into it alone. And I like the way you kept saying engagement, but I'm a numbers person. So less than forty percent of the people even responded back. And of the forty percent, less than half were really even interested in any of it. So what we, I think we need to sometimes dial back and ask, what are we really asking? What you're asking is, when there's already a sheriff's office, there's already a police department, there's already a fire department that is supposed to be providing services. And these businesses, and they're empty, as you said, have been paying taxes. So now what you're asking is, we want y'all to pay more taxes because we want to make it prettier and we want to hire additional police officers. It goes back to something that I learned in AC, in class, and it was one of the most profound classes I went to, is that in government, we got to get back to the basics. This is beautiful, I don't know how much money we spent on this, but we got to get back to the basics. It has not as much to do with you, but we still, fourteen percent, give or take, on making sure that we have that in there for our first responders to really get more than five people on the road. If we can do our job first and foremost as a board, then all of this would work itself out. Because I'm not a business owner over there, but I'll be honest with you. You sound real optimistic, but looking at those numbers, it's no. I already pay taxes. I'm not giving y'all no more money. I already pay you for a police department. I already pay you to be able to use CDBG funding and ARPA funding to help with homelessness. I already pay you taxes that are supposed to help with mental illness. We got to get back to the basics. I don't know how much we spent on this, but we are far from the basics on this one board.
Let me just make one point of clarification, Commissioner Franklin. The beautification effort that you said, Commissioner Edmison, is further up the road on one thirty-eight. This here starts basically at the city and the Henry County, Clayton County line, and goes up to seventy-five where it turns, or to Mount Zion Road, where that area turns into District One.
Right, right.
And then the rest of it is four, but that other beautification area is further, further down the road. You have something, Commissioner?
Yes, well, a couple of things. One is, are we working with, do you all work with the CID's, the Gerald McDowell, Aratropolis group?
We've worked with them, we're not working with them like specifically right now?
Okay.
Okay.
Because there is an interest now. You know, they've been getting around and we've been into meetings and all that. And people are wanting to be a part. I know Riverdale right now had a presentation a couple of weeks ago where they are interested in becoming, you know, a CID and all. And there are others and all that.
Yeah, it's the areas, so it's a difference in the areas. So, and it has to be, it's, I would say contiguous, but it has to be at least close to the other areas. So where my office is located in the Phoenix Office Park, then Riverdale Road, Forest Parkway, those things are closer. And so you can expand those. And so that, those discussions have gone on. I've actually participated with one or two of the expansions in the past to get additional property owners on. But that's a huge jump, leap, drive, I mean, just to get to Highway one thirty-eight. But I'm not sure if you recall, we did talk to the people in Morrow and unincorporated Clayton County. And honestly, it's similar. They were interested, I mean, we had people that actually traveled to come to the meetings at that time from like North Carolina or whatever, who owned the shopping centers. Things have changed a little bit, you know, some of the stores are gone since then. But it's just literally south and west of, you know, what's, what's here, which is something else to potentially look at, but that's been years. That's why I'm really recommending we keep the momentum.
That's what I was going to say.
Because of the fact that we didn't really do that when we had the other one that was Morrow, it was actually near South Lake Mall.
Right.
So it was called, I forgot what it's called, but maybe South Lake seventy-five.
People are finding out more about it and they are having interest. So I like the fact that, you know, you all want to stay engaged.
Yes.
And I like that, I think, because the more the information gets out and they study and think about it, it could be a very good thing.
It is a very good thing. I mean, because I work with so many CID's, I just want to point out that the majority of the CID's in Metro Atlanta are north of I-20.
Yes.
And having CID's that are south, I've had the privilege of working with most, if not all of them. And it's an education, but it's also economics. And so we have to be sensitive. And I just wanted to just kind of reiterate or say something, Commissioner Warner, we really don't encourage people, so to speak. We try to explain the benefits and the values of what a CID could do because it's really for the right of way, you know, the roads and, and things. But we are very sensitive. And we have been in a situation when the pandemic started where we had to stop because it was just bad timing. And in some cases, further north, they really didn't have an issue, if I can be honest. They weren't working from home, they were working from home, but things were still going. So their expansion went through. In the West End, there are smaller businesses, you know, we had to stop, but we were able to continue most recently. So it just really depends, different areas, you know, different things, different owners.
I'm glad you said that, because one of the things I, again, go back to, you said different areas. We talk about CID's up north, but as I study even salaries as recent as of today, those areas are paying their first responders very well. They kept the main thing, the main thing. The main thing we're supposed to do as a board is make sure not, has nothing to do with you, but the potholes are filled, our roads are paved, and our first responders are there to service the community. That's our first job. And so, yes, I understand the power of a CID, but I mean, with women in here, it's like being a mother. At the end of the day, you understand you want to take your child to Disney World, but you got to make sure that they have the basics in life first and foremost. And anything spent outside of that before nailing that down, we're out of order. That's the bottom line. And again, as I look at these salaries, as I'm traveling back and forth, go to these little towns, I mean, they are, I see more and more of folks as far as Jackson County, Georgia, that have left. I'm talking about way up north, near Pickens, have left our county because we still do not pay our folks, but to even a competitive rate. I was, we were finally able to get a ten percent in, but before we add this on, we got to make sure we take care of the basics person. That's not necessarily to you, because you were asked to do a job. This is to the board. We got to take care of our first job.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
And I just want to say, until we get to that point as well, have you all done any videos to show how the CID's look, you know, before and after and once that?
You mean to them, to the owners, yes.
Okay.
We use other CID's as a means of helping them to see what it could be. And then also invited either property owners or executive directors from other CID's, you know, to talk about it as well.
Okay, well, thank you. I was just going to say, but until we get to that point, that's a great, that's great that you all did that well.
Thank you, Ms. McGee, for this. I, I think this was well worth the effort here. I believe we've got to begin to move forward and be proactive in trying to develop our infrastructure and our business community. We know residential does not pay for our services. And commercial is going to help bring in those dollars to help us with our first responders and raising the salaries of all in Clayton County. So we've got to begin to do that. I really would love to see this move forward. I know when this was first brought, when we first talked about this and I talked about this with the late Commissioner Gregory, this is something that she wanted to push as well. We wanted to begin to move this, this county forward. That corridor is key, I believe, in helping us in Clayton County just be, create a great image. We've got to be proactive in creating our image. It's not going to just happen. So I thank you for what you've done here.
Yeah, and I can agree with that. We need to create a narrative that we want to see. But I truly believe in CID's. They are a great benefit to counties and cities. And a lot of good success stories have came out of them. But from what I'm gauging from conversation here, I believe there's still enough support to continue to move forward. Mr. Stanford?
Yes, Chairman, good segue. So Commissioner Anderson and Commissioner Davis have certainly been instrumental in being part of the listening sessions through the CID space. But one of the things they tasked staff with is ensure that we came back with a contingency plan if in fact the CID wasn't feasible and practical. So one of the things we talked about with the multi-jurisdictional approach is that we can go into an MOU. And if there is a letter of support that's being pushed forth to our senators and to our other federal governments about providing seed money for that area, we can address with a beautification by putting in grant money and having this multi-jurisdictional approach into the space opposed to having it directly on the backs of the commercial corridors. CID certainly, certainly are beneficial because the commercial corridor sees the value in putting the money in and they have skin in the game. But there are some other things that we can do. So we'll continue to work in tandem with Nookel Works and talking about the practicality of CID's later on. But we will try to bring something forth to the board as it pertains to a multi-jurisdictional resolution with Stockbridge and Henry County to see about putting grant funds in to continue to build out that corridor in light of the change.
Sounds good. Appreciate you. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your work and your presentation. All right, we will not have the item four, the FY twenty-three commissioners' report. So therefore, we will go to number five, analysis of impediments to fair housing. Mr. Ajiki?
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioners, good evening. I don't have any visuals. I just, I'm here this evening and I know, Mr. Chairman, you like that. I just want to inform you that we are, we've asked central services to assist us in putting out a housing study. The reason for the housing study is that we have a report due to hold next year that requires, and the report is called our consolidated plan. Every so often, you have to give them the big picture of where the program is going. And one element of that, that report is the housing study. So we just want to say the RFP could be released by ten twenty-six, in case you see this in the newspaper or hear it, so that it will not be a surprise. That's the only reason why I'm here.
Any questions from Mr. Ajiki? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. And, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, Commissioners, I would like to reserve my time for one hour till the next meeting.
All right. Tennis Center Capital Project, Ms. Rocker.
Yes, we have a speaker. Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. This item is really a collaborative item from Parks and Rec, as well as, I am here from an economic development standpoint to just tee it up for you, to let you know, I've met with Mr. Marcus Vickers, who will be presenting to you this evening. He's with Premier. He's with Premier Sports Facility Management Group. Um, the item that he is presenting to you is a tennis center renovation, uh, development project. Um, from an economic development standpoint, um, in our latest psychographic profile that we get complimentary done by Georgia Power, um, we do a community profile, gives your demographics and all that. But the psychographics gives, uh, areas that are of retail or goods and services that are leaking out of our community and that those with Clayton County zip codes spend their money in. And one of those we scored the highest in is recreation and leisure, uh, meaning people with Clayton County zip codes on their credit cards spend money in those categories outside of Clayton County to a large degree. So the logic is if those amenities were here in the county, they would spend them here locally. Um, it is a numbers and a science game. But, um, in the presentation, Mr. Vickers will come and present to you, um, his company's plans for renovating the tennis center. He has been in contact with, uh, Mr. Hodges, our Parks and Rec Director, uh, over this amenity and these details of the why, the wherefore, and how it can benefit Clayton County. So at this point, I'll ask him to come up and we'll entertain any questions at the end when he gets done.
Thank you.
Mr. Vickers?
Thank you. One second, got some billboards I need to turn around here.
Thank you for bringing up presentation.
Good evening, distinguished Commissioners and Honorable Chairman and constituents. Uh, first of all, before, let me add a point of clarity. This project is done under the auspice of Community Tennis Development, or Design, sorry, not Premier Sports. My name is Marcus Vickers, as was recited here, and I represent Community Tennis Designs. And I have to say that this is, I can't tell you how much of an honor this is to present this project, uh, and the renovation of Clayton County Tennis Center. It is themed the Keen Project, and it is, it originates from our longstanding relationship with Richard Williams, uh, and of course, the Richard Williams movie. Um, and so the, the, everything that we're doing is out of a good spirit and just taking the facility to the next level. I think this is a clicker. Okay. First slide. Okay. I prepared not only the, the boards, but also, as you can see in front of you, a slide presentation that goes into a little bit more detail. Um, each of you should have a package that delineates, uh, and everything that you see on the board and then some. First thing that we want to go over is the vision, as I just said. It's to renovate Clayton County Tennis Center, or the mission, rather. The vision is to create nine in, new indoor courts, eight to ten new, uh, pickleball courts, four new clay courts, fire pits, a grilling pavilion, and stone enclosures around the courts that are essentially cabanas. As a special note, the Clayton County Tennis Center hadn't been renovated since nineteen ninety-six. So as you could probably imagine, while it is presentable, it's still kind of, it, it needs some work. And again, this vision is to create, or keep it as its iconic origin was, which was a nineteen ninety-six Olympic venue, and follow up and create one of the largest indoor tennis facilities in the entire southeast corridor. Okay. A little too fast. Okay. This next slide goes over a little bit of the demographic highlights as well as our, some of our competitive advantages moving this project forward. As many people know, metro Atlanta is considered the tennis Mecca of the South. Uh, we've produced so many pros on tour as well as so many number one juniors in the world, one of which is Taylor Townsend. Taylor Townsend is essentially like my little sister, but she trained out at the facility when no one believed in her. We threw her birthday parties when she won the world title in the French Open juniors. I mean, we, we, Donald Young was a client of mine, and he's trained at the facility when he, um, when his parents got out of South Fulton Tennis Center, he moved straight to Clayton County. So I am proud of everything that we do, and we're gonna continue to do it with this project if so blessed. Um, to accommodate that, like I said, to accommodate the, the consistent demand for play, given the amount of people, is we got over a hundred thousand active league players in Atlanta alone. Uh, and to accommodate them with the rain and inclement weather, um, this indoor facility is speaking, will speak to that. Uh, as well, there's a, there's a crazy resurgent demand for pickleball. And so we have, we, we, we actually accommodate that and speak to that in this particular design and proposal. As well, and I've heard it pretty much since I've been sitting here, we have a growing senior, uh, population. Clay courts is, are, is their preferred surface because it's easier on the knees and it's just, it, it's just a good surface for them in general. And the ball plays slower on that court, so it's easier for them to get to. Uh, we are offering, uh, the, the plan calls for both red color and green color. The red color was attractive because it mirrors the, the French Open, and obviously the green color because it's more, uh, central to our area. Okay. Additional amenities will include the caf, a cafe. And the great thing about the cafe is, I'll say, I think on the, another slide is, it's gonna be indoor and outdoor. So we'll have an outdoor window for patrons to walk in who just want to grab a quick, uh, Gatorade or electrolyte infused, uh, beverage to keep them from crapping up. We'll have a pro shop, which will offer the newest apparel in the market, including Clayton County logoed souvenirs. And at, and a point for that, league play brings in customers from all over the world, not just in Atlanta, metro Atlanta, or Georgia. But league play, you could catch someone from Australia playing on a team because they're assigned in Georgia. And so the, the logoed souvenirs is gonna go a long way by being sold and, and distributed out of the, this facility. Conference, conference and media rooms, uh, state-of-the-art, uh, equipment, USB charging stations, a lounge area with high-end, commercial-grade furniture, extra-large TV screens and the, and the such. And also out, an outdoor fire pit area, excuse me. That outdoor fire pit area, believe it or not, has garnered so much response because, again, with tennis, you have a lot of leagues and tournaments, and there's really hardly any common space when you're waiting between matches or when you just want to socialize. There's some people that come up to support the tennis center, and they just, they've been walking the property because it's, you know, as you know, the, the beach is beautiful. I mean, it's absolutely beautiful. So this, adding things like that, that can be controlled by staff as it's, as it's contemplated to be gassed, is just gonna be amazing. Um, then the other amenities, of course, we have a workout room, a computer lab and library, which will help, um, with educational efforts as well as after-school projects. And we don't currently have this, and I, I know this is gonna be well-received, but a kids' jungle playground area that's covered so that kids can enjoy themselves while also staying out of inclement weather and, and, and the sun, quite frankly. Okay, all right. All right, cost and financing. The Keen Project's financial partner, Aethanex, by way of CLI. CLI represents Commercial Lease Investments. They've agreed, and it's a letter that comes right after this, to provide a hundred percent of the project financing, estimated at just over twenty-two million. The CLI essentially is a leasing company that would front the, the, the capital, and the, and it will be repaid out of the revenue from the actual earnings of the facility. At the end of its term, it's transferred back for a nominal, phenomenal consideration, most likely a dollar, and the, the county will receive its asset back in an improved state. Um, I've, in your packages, I have a, uh, I don't know if this is the next one, yes. I have this, uh, financial brief, right, that breaks down the dollars for the first year, for the first three years. And we have, obviously, uh, spreadsheets for lack of time, I didn't, you know, for respecting time. I didn't bring all that with me today, but I certainly can get those back to you. Essentially, at closing, the county would receive a million dollars. Every year thereafter, half a million dollars, and so on and so forth. Towards, at the end of its three-years terms, this, the, the asset itself would far exceed any loans that's taken out and paid for from the revenue of the actual facility. And just as I'm talking about loan, the loan would be non-recourse, which means it would run with the property and not with the county. And again, all revenues are being paid straight out of it. The lender also contemplates a, uh, reserve just in, so that the, the facilities can come up to the point where it can, you know, self-sustain itself, but it should be self-sustaining certainly within three years. Um, I don't want to get to that. I mean, that's really it. So let me just say in closing, I, I thank each and one of you for your time and your consideration for this because I, I can't even express strongly enough how I'm so proud of the things that has been accomplished at that tennis facility and the community over the last decade. And I think it's deserving of something like this that sta, not only stands out, but becomes an extreme draw to the community and to the nation, for that matter. So I aptly appreciate, I absolutely appreciate all the work that you do on behalf of the, the county and the constituencies. Do you have any questions? If so, I'm here to answer.
Any questions from Mr. Vickers? Commissioner Davis?
Well, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I think this is, again, going to us trying to tell our story in advance here and move forward. Now, I know we used to host, I believe it was probably seven, ten years ago, two HBCU tennis tournaments over, correct?
Yes, sir.
And they left and went to Mitzi, Mitzi Grant?
No, they went to South Fulton.
And they went because of what reason?
Oh, my gosh. They, they went to South Fulton because, one, we have more, they have more courts than we have. Also, they went to South Fulton simply because the USTA, not us, promised them the school's direct money. With a project like this, this is, first of all, I'm, in this, we're going back and forth with it. I am one of the founders for the HBCU tennis tournament, and I brought it to Clayton County, okay? The disagreements that I had with my partnership was that we shouldn't sell out for five hundred dollars a school. Project like this is gonna put more into those HBCUs than we could ever imagine. In addition, it makes us competitive to go to larger NCAA tournaments. We also lost the high school state championships that we had. Used to have out there for decades. Why did we lose it? Because they went to Rome where the USTA built a, what, fifty-court facility? They would never have gone to Rome if we have something, had something like this that would be competitive.
So this could, what I'm hearing is this could definitely be a catalyst to spur our local economic through sports while giving our minority students a chance to really be trained adequately and properly in a sport that is deserving and they're underserved in.
In short, yes, but also too, and I think we, we talked about this, and I have to say, this has been an honor because this has been a true team effort. And I, I, again, I'm working your con, contact. Mr. Williams has tentatively agreed, as I expressed to you before, to, to add a location, meaning this facility, as a training facility for his academy. He's also agreed to come and do a ribbon cutting, do the ribbon cutting for us if we move this thing forward.
Well, I, I know we didn't have anything like this in Compton, so that's a good thing.
Any other questions from Mr. Vickers? All right, well, thank you for your presentation, sir. It's very enlightening and, yeah, state of the art is exactly what we here in Clayton County is deserving of. We want only the best for, especially for our children. But to bring people from outside of the state as well as the country would be instrumental. And we, uh, we brand ourselves as an international, uh, county where the world lands and opportunities take off. So this is another project that we can benefit from as it continues to thrive and take off. So thank you again for your presentation.
You're very welcome. You guys have a blessed evening.
Yeah, I had to look in the back at Val because if I messed up the tagline, she was gonna get me. All right, that was the last item on the agenda. We're not gonna have number, item seven discussed today. And with nothing else before the board for the work session, we will stand adjourned. And unless the board members need a quick break, we can go straight into our special call meeting. Is everybody good?